How's the meeting order? Disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof. See any? Approval or amendments of meeting agenda. Be resolved that council approved the agenda of the committee in a whole meeting dated October the 12th as presented. A mover and a second in place, Matthew. No amendments, no discussion, all in favor? Gary. Approval of minutes. Be resolved that council approved the following minutes as presented. Regular meeting of council, September 20th, 2022, a mover and a second in place. Pat. And Angela. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All in favor? Gary. Are any business arising from the minutes? Inquirers from members of the general public. None? Delegations and presentations, we have none. No business arising from the delegations and presentations. Item nine, staff and committee reports, 9.1, public works.
Thank you. I'll start with distribution. So our hydrant flushing and valve exercising has been completed for 2022. So this year, we worked with Aqua on that, one of our staff worked with one of their staff members. It went really well, we were, I've included a chart if you see in the report. Just the difference in time spent on it compared to the past five years, you'll notice quite a significant difference. The difference being this year was that we could actually leave staff on flushing and not having to pull them off to do other tasks. And then, we had three hydrants that were broke during that time they discovered there was issues with. And I can send the rest of the staff behind them to repair them, where usually it would be after something like that also. It went really well, I think. Guys enjoyed working with Aqua, they reported to me, you know, nothing good things in Aqua, so. They also winterized our hydrants, so we're all set for the year, so I think it went really well. This was not on the report, but tomorrow, we have a water break repair on Silver Street. We're going to be shutting down the road from Penis Trail to Prospect, make a repair. North end of the street, so, it's on Facebook. And I've also identified all the business owners and everything that's going on. Capital projects. The only update I have is our paving program of years, of years have been prepped. Paving was, the actual paving is set to begin today, but because of the weather, they postponed it. They're going to go tomorrow, but I asked to wait maybe till Friday or possibly next week because of our, we're doing downtown, I didn't want to have too much going on in downtown. So general items, we repaired the walking bridge to Tech Park, our staff added a new brace underneath. Two by twelve brace, and then we installed new two by six over the old deck. And we also replaced the retaining wall on the park side with new eight by eights. Demora has replaced the sidewalk and paved the water break site on Lang Street. Our winter salt has been, well, is ordered and been delivered now. And we've created our winter sand supply, that's also been done, so our sand pile is ready to go for the winter and we have a stock of salt. Under buildings. So our fire extinguisher inspections are done for September. And we received a quote for structural repairs at the classic theater. We've given the contractor the go-ahead and we're just waiting on a start date. We do have an engineer's letter giving us temporary access to use a theater with certain restrictions. So the theater staff are all aware of what the restrictions are. So as long as there's no load on the roof, we're fine for now. You know, major snow will events happen, and that will change, but we're hoping to have that done before any snow happens. Security cameras are installed on our new shop. The boilers at the freezer have been serviced and they're on for the winters, so residents can control their heat inside their apartments. Severia, that's our elevator contractor, was in September to service the elevator. And they provided us a quote for servicing our chairlift here at the community hall, which we've gone ahead with. And that should begin, I think, November, the first check. Our equipment, so we completed all our emissions testing for our two plow trucks today and our dump truck. Our winter equipment's all ready to go. Our 2010 Chevy pickup truck, our mechanic Steve Cooper reported to me that it has major mechanical issues. And it's unsafe to drive, I've listed the issues here on my report. Due to the age, it's a 2012. It was bought used, we, there was, there's 216,000 kilometers on it, so. At this time, Steve has advised me that it would not pass safety, so we took it off the road. Our shop construction update. So today, we met with Dave Barton, our building inspector. He's requested a couple of things from us. One, two of the main things are the schematics for the plumbing and the ventilation system. Helm, I contacted Paul Helm, their contractor, for that, and he has reached, well, he's, it's in the works already, I'm just waiting for him to get it to me so I can present that to Dave. And he, I also asked for our furnace and the gas line installation. He's resubmitted another request with Enbridge for our gas line, and he's supposed to update me tomorrow, so I'll have some more info on that. And upcoming, we have our installation of the outdoor exercise equipment at Tech Park, that's been completed since last week. We winterized the part, the splash pad, we take it down the fence, the soccer nets, all that stuff's all put away for winter. And that is it.
Thank you very much, has anyone got any questions of Mr. Williams? Go ahead.
Your worship. Aaron, as the supervisor of public works, you've been in the job for a little bit now. How are the labor, how's your labor force, are you finding that they're stretched?
Right now, I think we're okay. That being said, when winter starts, I think we're going to be stretched. So, I know we, you know, we don't have water plant duties and stuff like that anymore, but. Winter operations require five, five tasks basically at minimum. We have two plows on the road, a loader, a sidewalk plow, and a shovel. So right now, we're missing one of those, basically, you have four operators. So I think we've ran seasons with one plow before and it just doesn't, it's just not the best way to do it. Our plow driver gets burnt out and takes longer to plow the whole town, so we're getting a lot more complaints, a lot more buildup on the roads. So I would like to see two plows stay out on the road and, you know, have that, those five duties kind of filled.
Thank you.
Further to that, Ben, would you be looking for a part-time employee for the winter months?
It's been done before, we've had part-time shutters on a call-in basis and it's worked. I think just finding somebody reliable that's going to answer the phones is the biggest chore, that's always been kind of the, but we've had good luck in the past with part-time. And it's, it's also like myself, I started out doing that part-time and it worked into full-time, so it might be a foot to learn and get some training from the guys. So, yeah, I think it did work.
Wonder if we might put that on the agenda for our next meeting, George, and see if we can do authorized part-time.
Anything else for Aaron?
Thank you very much.
Very good thorough report. 9.2, animal control. We have reports here from Miss St. Germaine. And I'll note that she does have a pound now in Helleberry. It's been inspected, it's updated, it's running and going, so. It's a big hurdle, it's over. Any questions or you could pass on to Miss St. Germaine? Anybody have concerns? Nothing, okay. Bylaw enforcement, we also have a report from Mr. Gilb. Any concerns there, any questions? Nothing, okay. To whom may concern, we're still working on the cleanup at the public school site. Very long and tedious process, we're not gaining much ground unfortunately right now. Hopefully, something can be done in the very near future. Other than that, I have nothing else. Municipal intern, Evan?
Yeah, please. Okay, so, at least for, you know, what's going to get done while the weather's still nice, we're kind of getting towards the end of updates for Tech Park. So, one thing to start off with, which was kind of exciting, was, you know, obviously recently we've had the traffic park completed. And we actually recently had another municipality reach out to us regarding potentially using the traffic park next summer as part of essentially, you know, a youth program. You know, they discussed that, you know, they're looking for a way to get kids to kind of get outside, have fun, learn how to ride their bike, things like that. And they said, you know, this is a potentially a spot that they could be using, so I think it, you know, just highlights that. You know, there is value outside of, you know, just this town, there is even value to surrounding communities to come and use the park. And then in terms of work that's been done since we last had a meeting. As Aaron mentioned, the outdoor exercise equipment has now been installed. We've already seen some people using it, which we're very happy about. Rosie's Gardens has now finished the playground, it says it's begun here, but it's been a week and luckily they've been able to complete it. Really, at this point, all that needs to be done for it to be 100% complete is sod has been placed down on the kind of dirt hill that they've made. And we just need to water until that's kind of ready to go, but, but that is pretty much complete. Again, as Aaron said, the bridge, the retaining walls, that has all been updated, so it looks great, feels much nicer to walk on. So that's really exciting. And then, the one thing that's still really in development right now is our walking path. You can kind of see if you go down to the park right now, we have a gravel path, basically, you know, dug out. And then hopefully, if the weather is nice, maybe by the end of, you know, this week, early next week, we'll start to see some paving getting done. And then, you know, from there, I think really, the plan is to see, you know, where the budget kind of shakes out and we will. You know, out of the list of remaining tasks that we had. On the initial kind of wish list, if you will, you know, that we had created a while back, we'll see what the budget can support. And move from there and hopefully, you know, get a few extra things added before, you know, we exhaust all that, so that's where we are right now.
Thank you very much, if you have any questions, go ahead, go.
Thank you, your worship. A lot of people, during candidates, many of them others, have been questioning the pavement that's down the program park. I was just wondering, have you given any consideration to creating the surface area that is there, constantly with the new pavement or with the concrete pad? You know, creating it, that kind of thing.
Can you elaborate on surface area?
Where the old pavement is, that used to be there for the old tennis court and all that, it's kind of cracked.
Right.
Unleveled, that's perfect.
Well, so, on the, on the tennis court area itself, it's not a really big deal whether or not it's fresh pavement or not, because the kids are just biking on it. It could be more of a hazard, I can understand if you were playing tennis on the basket, or on the court, but. You know, we just decided that the paving, like putting an overlay over top of the tennis court, which is not be at the best use of the money, just because. You know, it's, in terms of riding a bike, it's not really, you know, the paving is actually still not too bad for that. So that's why we ended up deciding to go, you know, with that route, just kind of leaving the pavement as is.
Okay, I guess the other question would be, are you expecting to have much of a budget left over for next spring to see if some of those things might be addressed then?
Yeah, so, you know, if, if the, we're kind of waiting to see the final price we get for the walking path. And if it stays around the range that we anticipate, there should be definitely some money left over. And then, from there, we will, you know, we'll be able to discuss what to do with that remaining money, because so far, we've kind of checked off the major boxes. And then from there, we'll be able to kind of move forward with, you know, kind of deciding based on the money we have left, you know, what can we, you know, provide to the public at this point.
I just want to raise some of those concerns, do you think you've done, you know, a fairly good job on most of it, it's looking great, it's much re-improved.
That's great to hear, thank you very much.
I just wanted to remind you, I've got the five little white pines at home, they're in the two to three foot range. And they can't stay where they are, you know, there's no room for them, so if you don't need them, then unfortunately, they'll just get ripped out. But we are at sort of the northern edge of the white pine forest, it'd be nice to be able to keep them and preserve them.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay.
Sounds good, yeah.
Taller.
Sounds good.
I don't know whether now or spring is better.
That's a great question, I don't really know that either. Yeah, I was going to say, they're probably the ones that know best, so I will, I'll reach out to you on that.
Yep.
Paul Marassa?
I'd just like to point out so that everybody's clear, when Evan was talking about the budget, he doesn't mean our fiscal budget, he means the budget, the money we got from a grant. Not anything that's costing the taxpayers any money, this was a grant we received. I just, I just wanted to, Evan, you did a wonderful job, I just wanted to clarify that.
No, that's, that's important, you know, to clarify, which I always forget, but.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Be resolved that council accepts staff and committee reports as presented, a mover and a second. Angela and Matthew? All in favor? Gary. Items for council direction, 10.1, draft bylaw 2022-25, procedural bylaw. Okay, what is council's favor for this? Go ahead, Pat.
I would like to see this passed before the election. It's only fair that the incoming counselors get a proper procedural bylaw to start studying right away. Instead of looking at it and maybe saying, well gee, maybe it should say this, or maybe it should say that, when they don't know at that point. It's like giving a blank textbook to a student, instead of giving them a proper textbook to help them learn. So this is, this is the guide they use to learn, so I think it's important that they get it right away.
Add to that, if there is anything that comes up, we can always look at it later and make a.
Exactly.
Paul Marassa?
I like the new procedural bylaw, I think it brings us in line to what the policies and procedures are currently in the current era. And I think that that's important, and I also believe like Pat, Councilor Anderson does. That they, a new council is going to need this. It's a tough enough transition and a learning curve when you come in as a new counselor, as I can attest to from the last election. You, you've got a lot to learn, so it's really good if some things are actually set out, so you're not struggling and you're not just feeling like you're over your head.
Any other?
Firstly, I really disagree with some of the comments that have been made thus far. I attended council's candidates' night. And I was very pleased with a number of the candidates who are coming out, I think they're a very good slate of potential counselors. And I think they're very much aware of what's right and what's wrong, what makes sense and what doesn't. And I could not myself suggest that we are in any way better or worse. Able to recommend what they should or shouldn't think of a bylaw that governs our committee meetings and procedures. With respect to what we have before us, I think it is significantly flawed. There are a lot of errors, and although I appreciate Gary's comment that we can amend things later, I would much rather see us pass a bylaw that, to the best of our ability, doesn't need to be amended. I think our due diligence requires us to look at each and every aspect of, especially this kind of a bylaw, which will determine how councils are going to run. I've heard a lot of people saying, a good one, a better one. We've had the other one for 30 years and it has served us well, there's nothing wrong with it. And it can certainly do us another 30 years it needs to. There are some things that are changing that should be addressed, should be looked at. I know Councilor Anderson was concerned about the electronic meetings and how they're going to be put in or not put in. I know another counselor has objected to some of the arbitrary timings in there for hybrid meetings where, I think it was the hybrids, you could only attend three days. Online, and the rest of the time you had to be there, it was all very arbitrary, and I think it deserves some thought before we look at it. But there's a raft of things that I have found, and I sent a list to council, I see the list hasn't been included in tonight's format, which is unfortunate. It would make things a lot easier for everyone to follow along. But, by your leave, your worship, I fully intend to go through my list and point out what I think is good, bad, and okay to council. And I know in an email from staff, one of my objections that Robert's Rules of Order was not included, they said it was, but I cannot find it anywhere. Steven, would you know where it's included in the new one?
It is in there. I'm just looking for one line.
Yeah.
Your worship, it's 3, 2, 3.
3, 2, 3?
It's like four, four pages in or something. Three or four pages end up.
3.2.3.
All I see is no item, it should be actually page nine.
Third down.
3, 2, 3. Where does it say Robert's Rules of Order?
Last line in the paragraph.
Where procedural matters of council or committee of council are not provided for in this bylaw and are not governed by the Municipal Act 2001 and the Municipal Act Conflict of Interest Act, Robert's Rules of Order shall apply.
Perhaps I have an older copy of the bylaw. Okay, I'll take your word for it. And try to figure out what's going on. Let's see, this is different from the one I had. So it's been added in, good, thank you. Let us go to 4. 1, 1. Role of council shall be to develop and evaluate policies, but shall not include the development of strategies to implement those policies. I would suggest that the manner in which policies are implemented can be almost as important as the policy itself these days. And I think council should always be in a position to exercise oversight over the strategies being implemented. So I have trouble with that, I'm a great deal of trouble with that. I do like 4 to 1. I do like 4, 3, 1.
4 to 1.
No member of council or committee has direct authority to interfere or circumvent the performance of any work being performed by the town, the town administration or council. I'm just saying, I like that, so, no question there at all.
I think that's encouragement for, for managing as well. Go ahead, Angela.
Angela's going to need that.
Angela, go ahead.
I'd like to remind everybody about the Fred Dean report that come out, I believe it was five, six years ago. Maybe longer than that, about council overstepping their roles. And taking on roles and responsibilities that were not theirs to take on. And one of those include interfering with the responsibilities and the roles of staff. And trying to manage staff, council's job is not to manage staff, nor is it to oversee staff. That is the CAO or the clerks, or sorry, the town manager's job, that is not our job. Our job is to oversee the town manager and for him to pass on our instructions and implement them with staff. And I know I for one do not want to be the council that gets another Fred Dean report slapped on me. I still have the five-page article from the newspaper of that report.
Okay.
I still suggest, gentlemen, that a council, and this one is fine, you know, that's basically saying exactly what Angela's referring to. That councils, no member shall have direct authority to interfere or circumvent staff. That's a good thing, I have no problem with that at all, but when it comes to strategies for implementation. And that should be part of council's initial consideration, it should be a package that's. It's not just a question of what we're going to do, but it can be very much a question of how we're going to do it.
Not our job.
Okay.
5, 1, 1, during the conduct of any meeting or council or committee, wearing hats, other than for religious purposes, are strictly forbidden by any member of the council administration. I don't understand why that would be there, it hasn't been there for as long as I understand, well, it's been a town. And I think, you know, again, I think the staff member suggested it was in keeping with standards of the current day. Standards of the current day are quite a bit different, and I'm not sure it applies to the wearing of hats. There are other reasons for wearing hats, and I don't think, again, if a person is wearing a hat to limit the amount of light that's going into their eyeballs. I don't think that should have to be discussed with anybody. I think the guys should just go ahead, we're adults here, we know what we need to look after ourselves, and we should be allowed to do that. So I would just get rid of head covering entirely. I had a bit of trouble with 5, 3, 2. Extending an automatic adjournment of 10:30 PM shall be permitted per meeting, and the maximum allowance extension shall be no later than 11:00 PM. Our current procedural policy simply says 11. Our current procedural policy simply says 11:00 PM shall be. The automatic adjournment time, and you can extend that by one hour, as long as you have a two-thirds vote. And I don't know what the circumstances might be that would require an ongoing lengthy meeting of council. But if it is an emergency, if it is something like that, then you shouldn't have to suspend this rule to be able to deal with it. It should be just allowed for, with the consent of council, and it might even say. Full. Vote of council. I think if you got one extension, then it fails. George, can I just ask Angela what she wants?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
In the beginning of our term of council, there was many meetings that went to 10, 10:30, almost 11 o'clock. So I can see why that was brought in. Because 6:30 to 10:30, that's four hours of meeting. And if we can't discuss and get through what we need to in four hours. I don't think anybody is in a mental frame of mind after four hours to make any decisions. Because of the mental fatigue, because a lot of people have worked all day. And then a four-hour meeting on top of that to go any further. I think would be fruitless. So I do see the rationale of that.
If I could respond to that, George, just quickly. My past as a union member, I would note that one of the. Key ways of negotiating with people is to make everybody stay in the room. For as long as coffee and sandwiches will keep them going, to try and reach an agreement. It's a strategic kind of a thing. I'm not suggesting we're looking at that kind of situation, but. And I don't know what kind of a situation we would be looking at. I just think. With the consent of all of the council. Not sure how to get into 551 and 552. I understand the clarity brought by having a chair not debating because he has to be a neutral, unbiased referee in the meeting. But there are other things we can do. I don't see it here, but I know in other cities and other areas. The mayor, who is normally the chair. Can be replaced by a member of council to actually chair the meetings, and that frees the mayor to do debating freely. There are other thoughts that we could look at here. To try and do an end run around. What to me sometimes seems to be silencing the mayor because he's sitting in the chair of the meeting. And with all due respect and having been a mayor. The mayor is a tremendous voice. They meet with government representatives, they meet with town representatives. They meet with a whole lot of people, and they have a lot of information that needs to be imparted to council sometimes. And while they can address the motion when it's being brought and trying to provide that kind of information, quite often during discussions. The mayor will find that perhaps there was other information he might have provided, and that can be coming. To look like a bit of a debate question rather than an information provision. So I would like to try and find ways to talk about that before we bury it in a, in the protocol itself. 571C. Members speaking on a motion shall be permitted to a maximum of three minutes. And D. Any member, including the motion, wishing to speak on the same item a second and final time. May do so for a maximum of three additional minutes, unless otherwise decided by the chair. Essentially, that is arbitrarily limiting free speech of council members. It's wrong. We have had many debates. Where all of us have spoken several times to an issue, because what happens as the conversations carry on. Other people put up other points of view that also need to be addressed. And you cannot be silenced by a rule like that. It's just counterproductive.
Well, I for one have never silenced anybody after three minutes if they've got a pertinent point.
Yes, but unfortunately, this is stating that that will be the new law. In our current procedural bylaw, it just says, you won't want to speak twice during the first two rounds of people talking, and thereafter, anyone can speak. Until the matter is decided, and the chair gets to intervene if they're just repeating themselves. You can do that. But this does say a second and final time. You don't get to speak again according to this. I have a very real problem with that.
Angela.
The updated procedural bylaw is actually five minutes each time, not three. I'd just like to point that out.
Yeah, but it still inherently has the same problem. Again, if discussion goes around the table and somebody raises another pertinent point, you want to respond to it, but you can't because your two times are up. It's wrong. Whether it be three minutes or five minutes.
Would you like to see the time taken out of that and just maybe until the person is too repetitious and then.
I would just go back to what we had in our original bylaw. During the first two rounds, you want to get to speak twice, once per round, and thereafter, it's open to the floor.
You have another one, Doug?
Oh, yes. New one from there.
Yeah, we'll look that one up, too.
643. That my council committee days and times shall be, as set out in the term of council. Council and committee meeting calendar adopted by council. 632 says notwithstanding section 631, committee meetings shall not be noted on the term of council. Council and committee meetings honored but shall be held at the call of the chair. That confuses me. No end. Many of the whole meeting in one, it says. They'll be set out in the term of council. And this one says they won't be. But shall be held at the call of the chair. I'm confused. I would note in our current bylaw. Yet. It's very, very clear. 531 and 532. 531 simply says, many of the whole meeting shall generally be held in council chambers at Town and Coval, 18th Street. On the first Tuesday of each month, commencement 6:30 is outlined in meeting schedule. And. 521, town council meeting shall generally be held in the council chamber, the Town and Coval office. On the third Tuesday of each month, commencement 6:30 has outlined in meeting schedule, so. I, the old one is very clear in its language, says exactly what we're going to do and when we're going to do it. But these, these two seem to be contradicting themselves in my mind.
Basically noted.
And, you know, I understand a little bit of questioning on that because it threw me a lot when I was trying to read it and make sense of it, too. 722. The mayor to set a mandatory council training session to be held within two months of the inaugural meeting, which we currently do. And annually thereafter. That seems to be an addition to me. And I'm not sure we need to do annual meetings. We can if council wishes, but it just strikes me as being a little bit redundant.
Leaves the option open for it, though. Leaves the option open. Another training session.
Well, yeah, and certainly I would think if anybody wanted to call for another transaction, we can discuss it.
I perfect, I think it makes perfectly good sense because at the world, at the rate the world is changing now, rules and regulations. Everybody should be updated.
Okay. I'm just raising it.
Yeah.
As you know, the majority always rule on these questions, and if that's how everybody handles, that's fine. I have a bit of trouble under 7.9 electronic meetings. 791B. A regular meeting or special meeting of council or committee may be conducted by electronic meeting in accordance with this section. And any electronic meeting protocol as developed and amended as necessary by the clerk. I would think the only authority for developing and amending protocols is council, not the clerk. Okay, and that is repeated in other sections, too. 792. All members may participate in an electronic meeting. Only the chair, recording secretary, clerk, or production staff may be physically present in the council chambers. On the designated physical meeting location. I have a question mark on that one, just because, you know. Why can't councils be present in the room? If that were a place that it's COVID and we want the place cleared, I understand that. But.
It's all members may. Doesn't mean they have to.
But it also says only the chair, recording secretary, etc. may be physically present in the council chambers.
In other words, they're the ones that need to be here.
Well, they need to be here.
That's what it's saying, that's what it's saying to me.
Yeah.
These guys need to be here.
What do you do?
And.
You can be here if you want.
We may or may not be here. As we feel necessary. That's what it's saying to me, anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except it says only the chair, recording secretary, clerk, production staff may be physically present in the chambers. Only them.
May cancel out the only.
Yeah, I would disagree with that, Gary. I think. Only means only.
No. They're the only ones that have to be here.
Yeah, I think, yeah, only have to be here.
Only they, may be physically present in the council chambers. That's what it's saying. Only that. It's not saying the rest of us can be there. Just saying. Again, 7102, hybrid meeting participation. No member of council shall be permitted to attend an in-person hybrid meeting by electronic means. We do, from time to time, want to participate in all meetings by electronic means.
What number, Doug, is that?
Sorry. 7102.
There's no 7102.
Pardon me?
There's no 7102. You're looking at the old one again?
Yep. Well, that's where I got all of my notes. So, I hope that maybe it's done.
Looks like we already fixed this problem, Doug. Pull up the page.
The 7104 still around?
No.
Let me stop at 798. Okay.
Yeah.
Copy, not yours.
One less thing to beef about. That's a good thing. We go through the motions, which I found no fault with.
What did 710 whatever say, Doug?
That had to do.
Did one or a bad one for you?
That had to do with. Understanding many circumstances, any council member may attend up to three meetings in a twelve-month period for council meeting or committee meeting. Including special meetings by electronic participation. I know another councillor had brought it to my attention and really objected to it. And I kind of agree. And again, you know, when we're looking at all of this sort of stuff and noting that we are getting a lot more technology in place for meetings. And noting how, like previously, we had one person who could call in on a telephone and had a speakerphone that they could listen in on at council meetings. Now we have full blown access. We did so during the COVID breakout. We were all staying home and communicating. So shouldn't we perhaps be looking at something that's more broadly inclusive of the new electronics available to us? That's often limited. So you got, you can only be away for three meetings, or only attend three meetings that way.
Well, which number is that for the three meetings?
That was the 710, which.
Well, which is.
7104, yeah. I'd like to have a look, see that later and see if it's back again in some other area.
Not that I remember. That was one of my objections.
Yeah. It's an area that I think I would like to see spent a lot more time debating before we close it off and just go with whatever.
Okay, next.
Well, just a quick question, an innocent thing, but on, okay, is 1056 still there?
Is which?
1056. It just struck me as something that is not really necessary, and it seems to be gone.
We're in secondary of a motion, one.
I just want to comment, really is, it's not really necessary, no.
Yes, I think occasionally we've had something come up, and, you know, it has to be voted on one way or another. And I have moved to second something.
Yes, I was involved.
And voted against because there wasn't any difference. In order to get it on the table to have the vote, you had to have a mover in the second year. And everyone sat there, and it was like, okay, yeah.
In my previous life as a councillor, I have seen that happen also, and that personal solely cannot vote.
That would have been the chair at the time, would have made that ruling?
Yeah, well. Not going to put them on anybody, but it did happen. I do remember that.
Yeah, and I did that at least. I did that once in this term.
If a mover second year, it's your, you're the affirmative.
Yeah. We voted, or made a motion that we didn't agree with, but put it on the table to dispense with it.
That's right, someone had to move and second it, and we just spent with him, voted down.
I didn't know anybody had ever questioned the vote. Okay, it could stay. So we get into schedule A, a guide to communicating with council. And. I have problems with. Well, one two one. Is that still in here?
On the page.
Yeah.
My problem with that. And for the audience, one two one states that all correspondence. Mail, email, etc., it's got to be submitted to the town manager. All correspondence must include the following information, author's name, complete mailing address, including postal code. A home seller, business phone number, and or an email address. I would suggest that that's. Of and by itself, that seems reasonable, but I don't think it is. Because I know a lot of people in Cobalt, I received a lot of mail from people in Cobalt. Quite often just use their mailing address, they don't identify with a phone number or an email address. And when you get over to one two six. It says any correspondence that does not contain the complete information noted in subsection one two one will be filed only. So if I'm a resident, has written to mayor and council. And just put their mailing address on it, it's going in a file somewhere, it's not getting to us. And that to my mind creates a bureaucratic nightmare, you know, you've got somebody walking around the street wondering when they're gonna hear from us. And we don't even know that they've attempted to contact us because it's been filed.
If they want to hear from us. Then are we going to continue just to use snail mail with them and then they will complain that we didn't get back to them in time? I'm looking at this like correspondence and coming, this section and coming to council. I think it's only reasonable that we know their name, their address, and phone number. Not everyone has email, but you know, have have the pertinent, the total pertinent information. We're dealing with legal legalities here.
We're talking about contact with residents of our town who want to communicate with us. And this is putting, I think, a very arbitrary law in that process. Totally arbitrary. I, again, and I would go back to what I've seen in other towns, cities. Where that whole business of communicating with the public. Has lots of notices that says if you want to write a letter to council, or if you want to do a presentation, if you want to do a delegation. Call this number and they give the phone number of the department comes after that. And they say, and ask for a person to guide you. And that can solve that question. But it's not cutting off the communication, that's what bothers me about that idea of if you don't have that information, we're sticking in a file. That's closing a door, and I don't think we should do that. If you want to be open and transparent. You find every way you can to make sure that resident has a chance to get their message to council.
Those have the chance, it's just we.
The author should also have the same respect also.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The author should also have the same respect also.
What does they know about it, George? Yeah, I know, how many people go on the internet to read a file to see what they're supposed to send you? I would hazard a guess like almost none.
That is great, I don't know, you've got to be able to know how to contact people.
Yes, so they give us, they have to give us a contact point.
I think if your issue is important enough to contact somebody, then you should probably follow proper steps to.
Same way as you contact any business, and if you want to reply from them, you're going to be giving all that information for them to reply to.
As well.
I can tell you that one of our neighboring municipalities, and no, not the one right beside us. That the only way you can contact their counselors is through their website, and when you put why you want to contact them. You actually have to give them a phone number or an email address in order for you to get any kind of response from them. And that's right through their municipal's website, that's the only way you can contact the counselors. I I think we're very transparent and I don't think we're asking for a lot for a phone number or an email. Because sometimes it's just a matter of we need clarification of what the issue is. It's not that we need it to respond, but sometimes everything's not always clear in the reading of a paragraph. And you want to get some further information so that you can get a proper answer for people. I see, I see the report.
Yeah.
I think in Cobalt. We should be reaching out every which way we can to make sure a resident gets a chance to have their message heard.
They always have had the chance to have it heard.
This file, when it goes into a file, do we check this file monthly or yearly, or does we just burn the file at the end of the year?
Steven, you have a comment on that, what that means?
We have a one point two point five. Correspondence. Would be specifically, as addressed specifically to the council and will be open recorded.
I was gonna get that one next. No, this one was a communication from the public and they have to put on the name, postal address. Telephone number and or email.
Well, for the town to respond in the aspect. It would require some individuals now don't have. Home phone number, so they provide cell numbers or email, it's whatever the individual would like, they would tell us how they would like to be responded to.
So it just gave you one contact point, even even a mailing address, isn't that sufficient?
Or so they, to ensure that it goes to the individual, you'd almost have to put a registered letter in. So they receive it and then acknowledge that they have received it.
Amazing, I think that's only.
Exactly, I agree with you, yeah, if you don't, if you can't phone them, if you can't.
With.
Deal with them directly.
With today's technology with the email system, you could also do the read receipts and items to ensure that they are aware or they have received that communication that you assembled.
Well, I I can be corrected at the town office at a later date, if I have to, but I know that we've had, we have a lot of. How would you say, people that have bought properties here that don't live here that. Rent them out, and we've had one particular instance where the place was a shambles and we wanted it cleaned up. We could not get a hold of the owner because we had no information as to where he was. Another one I think is the mats at the, that belong to St. Pat's Church, the big building. We had a hard time to find that person. In fact, our staff spent a long time looking for it. If we had had. This correspondence, we would have been a lot easier off.
No, Kevin, that George is kind of like, we tried and we couldn't reach them, so that's fine, we've done our best to try and reach out. But what's in there says we're not going to reach out, you don't write, swallow that word, it's filing it. That's my problem with it. I want to see us reaching out some way, somehow. To make sure that somebody who is actually physically trying to reach us gets a chance to do so. And not have their letter go into a file, which has, I don't know, Gary, is it? Is it file thirteen?
Maybe that's maybe a bit on the extreme, but. I think being a small town, if they really want to reach me, they'll just come to my restaurant. But this, this kind of just does, I think, because today's way it goes today, everyone's. Nine out of those ten letters might be somebody giving you shit rather than. You know, asking your legitimate questions, so that's why you got to put the name on it because you got to stand up for what your question is, right? So they want a name and an address and make sure you know you're local and you live here. Maybe the cell phone is maybe pushing your privacy limits, maybe, maybe you don't need a phone number. But maybe it's faster for one of us to get back to them just by the phone, so.
It just enables business to go faster and go.
If I have a legitimate question, then I'm going to make sure I put my stamp on it and I put my return address on it, and you know, I lick it and I stick it and. It's good to go. If it's a legitimate question, if I'm just going to criticize somebody, then I'm not going to put my name on it.
You do, and probably I do, but a lot of people in our town, I think, may not.
None in our town, sure.
Well, we're not selling anybody short, but I am saying a lot of people. Grew up in a different system that doesn't have emails in their history and it doesn't have a lot of the other things in their history. Phone numbers were not always something that was on.
What would you like to do here, Doug? Drop the email or the address off or something, or? Or the phone number or everything but the name or?
So that we can't get back from you.
What would we keep out of these four things, three things?
They, they, as long as they give us a contact.
If you have a name and a phone number or name and an address, I would probably find for me.
Exactly my point, you know.
Okay, Matthew.
Free worship. We're dropping one two six B. Would that suffice, or? I I just don't understand why we're looking at the.
We're killing ourselves.
Email and the address, and we're just, we're just killing ourselves talking about something that. Let's just get to the meat of the matter, get rid of one, one point two point six and say, okay. Include this information or a combination of this information and we'll get back to you. Instead of we're going to file it. And that way we're not whipping around the table and not following procedure by, you know, interrupting each other and going on and on and on. It's embarrassing, it's embarrassing. No, this is embarrassing, they're supposed, we're talking about a procedural bylaw here and literally the people around the table discussing it are following it. We're interrupting, there's the core of issues. Like, can we get back to it?
Yeah. Go ahead, Angela.
I don't think we're asking for a lot for a mailing address and name. And I would like to point out a home cell business number and or an email address. Give us a way to contact you other than just a physical mailing address, that's all we're asking. And. At this point, I'm I'm ready to ditch the whole thing because how much time have we wasted on this one point now?
Okay.
Somebody who has a legitimate concern and they want us to get back to them, they're going to give us a way to get back to them. If they don't, we can read their correspondence in an open meeting. And then file it, we can't, we can't respond to what we don't have.
You're right, carry on.
Okay. Oh, I have several others, but. Let's look maybe at this question of correspondence. Where's the new one? Now, Stephen, you were mentioning it, the question about the mail. Is that into the one?
One point two point five.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one that. Well, it's kind of back to one point two three, correspondence received from members of the public that is addressed to council will be reported and forwarded to the appropriate members. Correspondence received from members of the public that is addressed to the mayor will be recorded and submitted to the mayor. Correspondence received from members of the public that is addressed to a specific counselor will be opened and recorded and immediately placed in the mailbox located in the town office. Why? Would a specific counselors mail the open?
Go ahead, I can. Free worship. I'm in agreement with Councilor Wilcox on this, this is one thing that I look, I couldn't wrap my head around. One point, one point two point three and one point two point four are pretty straight to the point, one point two point five seems redundant. And it's, it's intrusive, it's an invasion of of the privacy between that. Right there in that counselor, there could be something sensitive in there that needs to be brought up in a delicate manner and it shouldn't be open. And presented by anybody else but the counselor.
I agree. Everybody said, there's also other legal questions that come, can come involved there, like invasion of privacy. One example I read that I thought was really interesting, I'll just quickly get it through, was a bank. And they had an employee who left them and they had issued a pay statement. And they opened the pay statement to see if the numbers and the dates were correct. And the employee filed a complaint with courts and the court screamed with the employee. Because the court said the bank had other resources it could have used to discover that information without invading his mail. So. There are all kinds of things that can't routine that come out of the background and whack us down, so. Yeah, anyway, okay, enough of that. We have. Speaking about delegations on five point. Three. One C in the old one.
Where's that?
Sorry, I I really apologize, this is.
Page forty nine.
Yeah, page forty nine. Authority deny delegation request. If the delegates already delegated generally on the same subject within a twelve month period, if the delegation is with the sole purpose of generating progressive motion, etc. The bylaw we currently have. Says that you can deny a delegation if it's on the same subject matter within a twelve month period unless it contains new information. And I think that's critical, because a person's made a delegation once, if they came up with something new that might also apply and have bearing. They shouldn't be denied for whatever the balance of their twelve months period might be to bring that to our council.
Okay. What's your thoughts on that?
I think if it's something significantly new. And that's at the discretion, I don't, I don't know whose discretion do we leave that to? The manager?
Mayor and the manager?
Sorry, the mayor and the.
And a manager?
Yeah, if so, if it's something significantly new. I agree that we should know it. Um, but it's got to be something significantly new that can sway the outcome. Same way the courts will allow something to be heard again if it's something significantly new. Unless it's a case of murder, then they don't. Just saying. Trying to add some levity to this.
Again, going in the interests of open and true disclosure for people. I'm not sure how judgmental the mayor and someone else and staff might be as to what is significantly new or not worthy. That that bothers me, and then it becomes a question for council.
Who would you like to have decide, and if it's just repetition or if it's something new? Someone has to make that decision.
And not be the person who's making the delegation.
What?
Let me see how that would work.
I have something to tell you, put me back on please. And now somebody is going to say, oh, no, that's not new enough, go away. I I'm not sure. I, I'm not sure, I'd wanna have somebody reject it that way, I know what you're trying to say, but again, full openness kind of requires us to hear what the guy has to say.
Oh, go ahead, Angela.
I think it's a pretty sad state of affairs that you're not gonna trust your town manager and your mayor, who's been voted in by the people of the town, to make that decision that you want to micromanage every decision the town manager and the mayor make?
No, 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 not micromanaging or anything, I'm just saying, what isn't necessarily important to you might seem important to me. We look at it differently, all of us do. What you might think is not new enough, I might think is, oh, that's substantial. I would like the opportunity to make that judgment myself.
I said it's definitely new enough to change the outcome of the decision.
I would know.
It can't just be the changing of the wording of something, or it can't just be, it's gotta be something more than something just, for lack of a better word, sorry, I'm stumbling for words, cosmetic. It's gotta be some background information that's significant enough that's gonna make a change, not just a regurgitation of the same thing over and over again in hopes that they're gonna numb us into submission.
Hence, it has to be new. If it's regurgitation, it's not new.
Exactly. Okay, so then, that's it, Doug?
I think at this point, I'm gonna give up for now.
Okay, so what direction do we have for council folks to, for that? You wanna put in a notice of motion? Doug, for the next meeting? Do you have whatever your plan is?
Wasn't quite prepared to do that tonight for the word and everything, George, why would you like this notice of motion?
Well, I, I don't like, I don't want, I'd like to put in a motion to accept this at the next general meeting itself. I think the flaws we can, we can fix out as we go along.
I, I guess my point is always, George, I'd like to see what the fixes are that are put in and make sure that that actually represents a significant change that I think we were all looking for. I, I understand what you're saying, but quite often I find, perhaps sometimes I haven't been clear enough, and something, you know, in communication, things get lost, and I always like to see a hard copy come back. Maybe if that could be done, do the revisions and send them out to us again well in advance at the next meeting, so we can read it over and make sure what we were looking for.
Go ahead, Angela.
I'm fine with it the way it is, because everything that we've gone over is minor, it's it's not something that affects the rules, it's all things that can be amended later. And I read through this when we got it, the amended bylaw. So I think we were given significant time to go over it, it was sitting in our email. I just, we've got other stuff we've gotta deal with too, not just this, yes, this is important, but I think it, it, it hits all the important points. And, and the rest of it, I, I think we can amend, do amendments to it. I don't think it's a huge deal, there were amendments to the last procedural bylaw. That's just my personal opinion.
Gary?
Yeah, that sounds good, and I think we can fix things as we see fit, or if they come into.
Through your worship, I'm of the opinion that under Schedule A, 1.2.5 and 1.2.6 can be amended, but other than that, I'm in favor.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I've got that marked too, so yeah, other than that.
Yeah.
I, I, I really wanna see what the proposed changes are going to be and how it reads before I would agree to anything. I don't think some of the points that I've raised are inconsequential or minor, I think some of them are quite major. Notably, things like curtailing the amount of time a councillor can talk on a motion, that is a major point. The mail thing and contacting residents is a major point. Opening a councillor's individual mail was a major point. These are all significant things. So I really wanna see what the changes look like when it's redone. And then, you know, if it still doesn't cut the mustard, then I would say refer to a committee or postpone it to the new council.
Decisions are made, Mike, go ahead, Angela.
This isn't something that we can put through a committee, because the committee is made up of members of the public and members of council, and I don't think it's fair to ask members of the public to do a procedural bylaw when they don't have any idea what the procedural bylaws should be, because they're not aware of what the municipal act is.
A committee of council can be composed of any three members. No, no, public members are not necessary, they may be included, but it's not necessary.
We're doing that, yeah, for council, because they would like to see a motion come for the next general meeting. And put it on, it's ordered, ask the, ask the president.
1.2.5.
We can delete that, sure. Okay. 10.2. Draft byla 2022-21 amendment to byla 20 0903, property standards, wording on Form PSA, can you help us with that?
Yes, your worship, it's an amendment in the wording brought forth by bylaw officer. To make sure this is part of all of our orders, so the wording will be the same in all of them. So therefore, if previously, previously stated violation are set out in Schedule A attached here to and forms part of this order. And the new version would say Schedule A attached here to sets out the work required to remedy such violation and to bring a property into compliance with the bylaw. Okay, that makes things a little more clear, and again, we can mess with the other orders.
Anybody have any questions on that? If you will have a motion at the next meeting. Okay, 10.3, draft byla 2022-22 amendment to byla 2020-50 user fee, define commercial class 1 and 2, and add fee for duplicate copies. Go ahead.
Your worship, what this is, is back in, there was a resolution in 2021-159 that passed for a duplicate copy of either a property or billing or a statement account of $50 and $20. Therefore, what we like to do is moving forward and in conjunction with other municipalities, is just have a lower fee of $10 for each of the items. And number one, that under Schedule C, under there, you see under 2022, it corresponds with the other marks.
Questions, comments? Okay. 10.4, consideration for adopting an asset management plan, Evan, heard.
Would that be a motion then?
Yes, that would be a motion. 10.4, yeah, asset management plan.
Yeah, so, so all this is, is back in 2018, Ontario passed new legislation requiring all municipalities to have an asset management plan. So by 20, by this time this year, we're required to have basically what you see in here, which includes our roads, our water, wastewater, sewage, and bridge, essentially just covers things such as the approximate cost to, you know, of basically a collective amount of whatever infrastructure you're looking at, you know, kind of the, the existing rating, what rating you are kind of targeting to, to get that, you know, whatever category it is, whatever you're trying to get it to. And then as you kind of read on the Ontario regulation, next year this will have to be updated again, which and it'll include buildings that the town owns, and then following that, it'll kind of become, you know, fleet like, you know, equipment trucks, whatever, you know, that the town owns. So it's a year-over-year process to, to build this. This is up to this year, this, this is what meets regulations, and then, you know, next year we will update it, and it'll be kind of a thing that is continually updated year-over-year, it's just.
So, anybody have any questions for Evan, comments? Go ahead, Angela.
More a question, I guess, for staff, what happened to the last asset management program that we approved?
So there was one done back in 2014, and we, basically Marmac, who helped us complete we looked at it, we reviewed it, a lot of the information was just outdated or incorrect in some cases. So we basically just decided that it would be more appropriate to start from scratch, do it again, because the one that was done in, in 2014 really didn't meet a lot of the standards of the, the new regulations, so we started from scratch.
No, I'm not, I, yeah, sorry, Evan, I'm not talking that long ago, was just after we're into our current council, we purchased an asset management software.
That, that is likely this, so we work with Marmac, and they have an asset management software that basically helps build this, so within that software, it includes every single road, every single, you know, sewage line, every single water line that we have, and it's a big, big comprehensive kind of spreadsheet that, that helps build this document.
All right, sorry, gray-haired woman, I didn't recognize the name.
No, no, it's okay, no worries.
Any other questions? Comments? No, this is being mandated by the province, obviously.
Yes.
What happens if I don't make, make that asset management plan, if I see?
So really all, you know, so what it is, is it, it will impact your funding from the government long term. Essentially, you know, what they wanna see is that your municipality knows what they have, they, you know, they know what they're planning on doing with, with the assets that they have, obviously, you know, you don't know, you know, if something's gonna break in six months, you, you know, but you, you put in, you plan as best as you can, and that's really what they wanna know, is that you're on top of things, you know what's going on within your town in terms of what you own, so that, you know, you're not just basically wasting their money, they don't wanna, you know, fund things for you if there's more important things on the table, or they wanna make sure the money that they're going to be providing is being used, so.
So why apply for funding for Lang Street, because I live there and it's only been done three years ago?
So, yeah, likely, I mean, so it depends, I mean, if, if Lang Street is like freshly paved, it looks great, chances are, they're, you know, they're gonna say, sorry, you have more pressing issues to worry about, but, you know, if something happened, you know, if there's a major weather event and it and it destroyed the street, then obviously, you know, hold the phone, sorry, but, but yeah.
Thank you, any other comments, questions? Thanks, Evan. So we'll need a, a. Items for council information, 10.5, DSAP Q2 report 2022. Something you'd like to see, you want that one, Steve?
Well, thank you, your worship, with DSAP, over the last few months, actually, our relationship with the municipality with DSAP has increased dramatically in a positive sense. We're dealing with issues that were present at a few buildings nowhere around as well as a praiser. We've been meeting monthly now to address any issues at hand, and we are taking a proactive stance with DSAP now, moving forward.
Be it resolved that council accept the items for council direction information, that presented a mover in the sector, please, Matthew and Doug. Discussion that had all in favor? Very. Other business? Outstanding business, the list is here, one little thing we had to. Okay. Close session, we have none, the rising, adjourned. We resolve a committee to hold meeting, council be adjourned at 7:56.
Yes, please.
Over by Matthew, all in favor? Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, members of the audience.